Thank you for joining us this morning for the December 20th, 2023 Monte Sereno Community Center Committee's meeting. Before the meeting is put to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. For today's meeting, Zoom is being used to allow public participation in the Community Center Committee meeting. For those using Zoom to participate, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a committee member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the chair and enabled to speak to the committee. Only attendees using Zoom, in case you can use the raise hand to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or to comment. And lastly, when we are not all in the same room, all votes in the meeting must be taken by the hall.
Thank you. I'd like to call the Community Center Committee Meeting of the City of Monte Sereno to order on Wednesday, December 20th at 9:05 PM. May we have a roll call, please?
Public member Harrington?
Here.
Public member Allen?
Here.
Public member L. Allen?
Here.
Public member Rangazi, he's not here yet. Public member Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Seiler?
Here.
Commissioner Wyle, let me know if he would not be able to attend tonight, today's meeting. Mayor Walshimer?
Present.
And Chair McEachran.
Present. What I'd like to do, I don't see it on here, but I'd like to deal with the orders of the day. And if you could put the presentation up that I did, that I sent you. While that's going on, we'll have oral communications at this meeting. Anyone from the public can speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak under oral communications on a matter pertinent to the Community Center Committee, please raise your virtual hand, and there is no one in chambers.
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. I'll close oral communications. Did we receive any written communications?
No.
No written communications. We'll go to announcements. What the purpose of announcements is for the understanding of the committee is that if there's an announcement that that is pertinent and we'd like to make it, we can do so even if it's not on the agenda. And it's only an announcement, so I, and if there is an announcement that a, that any member of the committee would like to make, then if you speak with the chair beforehand, then we can coordinate that. Okay, so that's what the purpose is, that gives us some flexibility if we change this at the city council level. So there are no announcements today. Consent calendar approved the minutes of the November 15th, 2023 Community Center Committee regular meeting. That's the only item on the consent calendar. So we'll, if we take public comment on that first, there's no one in chambers, so I'm not going to repeat asking people from chambers to make comment. But I will ask anyone appearing virtually to, if they've got a comment on the consent calendar, to raise their virtual hand.
No hands are raised.
I'm closing public comments on the consent calendar. We're going to now, what I'd like to do is deal with the orders of the day and
Do you want to vote?
Sorry, sorry, thank you. Yes. We have a motion and we have a second, do we have a second? A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
That was quick. I heard him and so who, who took the second?
Allison was one second earlier.
And it's a seven zero zero vote. To pass the consent calendar. Thank you. I have a sense of urgency because I just think, first of all, we need to start to have a sense of urgency. The other thing is we've got hard stops at 10 o'clock and I want to make sure that we can make it through the agenda. Now, under orders of the day, what I'd like to do is talk about the community center features and scope, which is actually item number six on the agenda, so I'd like to move that to number one. And then I'd like to have item, this is under the new business, but unfinished business, we'll, we'll do that in the order. But then I'd like to go through the plan submittal and plan check review. And there's going to be a presentation on that and then go through cost scenarios, timeline scenarios, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grants. And then the community center website, and I'm not sure if we'll get to the extended survey or not. What I'd like to do is have a agreement that we can change the orders of the day.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Now it's, I believe, staff is going to do the presentation on the, on the discussion of the community center task timeline and plan. So you can close this presentation.
Morning, everybody. Joe Jordan, the workforce director, city engineer for the city, have a short PowerPoint to share with you this morning.
Is this one yours, right?
Yeah. Okay, so today we're going to talk about timelines, some milestones that we're projecting from staff. It's going to correlate very similar to what you'll see later in this PowerPoint or the information that Chairman McEachran has provided as well. The dates at the end match, which I'm happy to see since I haven't seen this for very long, but my end date's about the same as the date that we've got on, on his timeline as well. So let's go through this and if you have any questions, feel free to stop me at any time. Okay, let's first just talk about what a public project is. Public project 101, this is CIP project for the city approved for last year's budget. But basically, the definition of a public project is the erection, construction, alteration, repair, or improvement of any public structure or building, which is what we have here. So this project definitely is defined under the state code, uniform public construction cost accounting. There's also cost accounting that we need to follow for any type of public project. Again, any type of reconstruction or renovation or improvement to a publicly owned or leased property would be included in this, so we'll be following those state procedures. And then the last one definition for cities, since we are a city, a project for the direction improvement, paint, repair, and public building, that also qualifies for that. So we have it categorized by state code of what we can and can't do as far as using different types of public funds and grant funds. Bidding thresholds, Assembly Bill 2249 dictates what type of bidding process we must follow. That's based on the value of the project. Need contracts of 16,000 or less, maybe performed by city employees, that's basically city manager and maybe one other person, so we won't be doing that. We don't have enough people on staff to be doing that. Contracts of 200,000 or less is what we call an informal procedure. It's not quite as involved as getting all the bids in, following certain procedures. But what we have in our case is contracts over 200,000, which must be led by formal bidding procedures, which we will follow here at the city. So what is the formal bidding process? This includes the notice to inviting bids. They must be published in a local newspaper and or construction trade publications. There will, information needs to be released to the public at the same time to ensure no contracts received, no contractor receives any type of unfair advantage. So everybody receives the same design package at the same time. Submission of sealed bids, that will be located here at the city. Typically, Loyce would be there to receive the bids at the time and date prescribed within the project. None of them will be accepted after that date. If they come in 10 minutes late, too bad, they're disqualified. They have to be here on time and complete. Once we receive those bids, public opening begins. Typically, the city clerk, like I said, Loyce will open those. Then we will, the staff will evaluate each bid for extensive contract requirements. There's a laundry list of 40, 50 issues that need to be checked off the box to make sure they have a complete bid package. It's pretty extensive. We will go through that and make sure it's a responsive bid for what we've asked them to do. After that, we look at awarding the contract to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. So if we have a bidder who has a bad reputation or is in certain lawsuits or what have you, we can actually discard them from being a responsible bidder. Typically doesn't happen, but there is some leverage for that. Staff will evaluate and bring the bidding conclusions based on the responsive and responsible bidders to city council for direction and decision. So we will, we will find the most responsible bidder and the best bid, bring it to council. They will deliberate whether they like the price, whether they like the contractor, bring up any issues they have concerning the the contract itself, and then they will decide whether to fund the project or not to fund the project. We are very hoping that they will choose to fund the project. After that, also the, the council has the ability to reject all bids in reality time. I believe that's what happened this, well, actually, last time this was bid, they did reject the bids. Is that correct, Chairman?
That is correct.
Okay, so that is
He rejected all the bids and then the finance committee was instructed to value engineer the project and determine how to make it more cost effective.
Right, which brought us here today. So here we are, round two. We're ready to roll, so.
Oh, there's a lot of steps between the end of that and where we are today. There's lots of stuff.
Okay, we don't want to take it the whole hour this morning, but go ahead. So milestones for the community center, let's look at these real quick. Design, as you all know, the architect and subcontractors have been working furiously to get our first plan check in, which we got this last past month. We reviewed those plan checks. You will hear those this morning and we're awaiting the resubmittal of those comments that we've given them. I'm expecting them to be here the first of January, so we can take round two, view of those. Formal public bid, I'm projecting that more view and approval of plans and specifications estimated to be completed by the end of January. Packaged official bid documents to advertise for four weeks in February. So we'll prepare that package to go out to the community. It'll be out there so we can hopefully get as many contractors and bidders as possible. Award to the contractor, pending the findings and review process, staff report should be ready for council direction at the first or second meeting in March. Fifth or the 19th, we have two meetings in March. Construction, notice to proceed after all contract documents have been executed to be provided in April of 2024. Our contract architect has stated that he projects the project to take nine to 12 months to complete. We're using a nine-month timeframe on my end. And that would put us at ribbon cutting, the completion of the nine-month timeframe will be in January of 2025, if not sooner, and that correlates with what you'll see later on in the package this morning as well. Any questions on that?
I've got a number of questions. Can you go back to the slide on the the requirements?
Yeah.
For notifying people?
Yeah.
Next. Notice, oh, back up. Okay, so I've spent quite a bit of time going through the bidding process and what the requirements are at state level, what the state law is, and that sort of thing. Rather than asking questions, I know the answer to, I'll just explain. The purpose of the bidding process is to make sure that every potential contractor has, is knowledgeable and can put in a bid that will yield the lowest cost, knowing the scope of work to the agency that's contracting, okay? In California, there are a number of databases that are out there that you have to subscribe to, that you can then put the bids on. You can advertise, you have to advertise them. That's a requirement by statute. But you can also use these other communication channels. Again, the purpose is to make sure that everyone has all the information. So we've got a, so I think, or sorry, let me back up. This is a question, what's the minimum number of days that you have to advertise?
Two full weeks is what we've used.
I'm at five statute, what's the minimum?
Two marks.
14 days.
Calendar days.
Right.
Okay, and how long are you going to do, how long do you want to advertise?
We're planning to double that.
And why are you planning to double that?
To make sure we get all the potential contractors to participate as possible.
Okay, so what I've also seen is that there's a notice of a, of a bid coming up, of a project coming up. And there's, I can't, I was trying to find the database that I was in a while ago, a month ago. But you can actually say this bid is coming up so that you're starting to gather people that are knowledgeable. And if we were to have a website, we could put our unapproved, unpermitted plans on that website. We could then get, we could then solicit people and say, and we can do a press release. And we can say the city of Monte Sereno is trying to do, is going to do this. We anticipate the, the bid package going out no earlier than X date and no later than Y date. And then people could see the preliminary documents and we could cut two weeks of cycle time out of that. And I think, and we'll get to this in a minute, but when I look at what you put forth, and if we don't get this project done by 12:31, we're going to lose $500,000 in grant funding. And if it takes 12 months to do and our ribbon cutting is in January, that doesn't work. So I'm sorry, I just, I, I'm so happy to see this, but I think that, I think we're leaving some things on the table and we have to understand what our, what our constraints and our opportunities are. Sorry, those are, those are my questions and, and comments, so you'll understand. And I, I want the entire committee to understand what's at risk and where we're going with this. May I, so I, I'm hearing for the first time that if, if we don't have a ribbon coming by 12:31 of 2024, we, we, we don't qualify for the half million dollars grant? That is entirely correct. Okay, we have to finish this project by 12:31, 2024. Thank you. That's my information.
So what's defined as finished?
So we, yeah, well, certificate of occupancy, ribbon cutting, can be weeks automatically finished. Right, fine.
Yeah.
I mean, let, like, we'll get into that under the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Grant. But there's, there's quote, the letter of the law, and there's the, there's the intent. The intent of this from a business perspective is Silicon Valley Clean Energy wants, gave us a grant that's a demonstration grant. As each day goes by, the value of the demonstration facility loses value. So they have a sense of urgency and I can explain that later, but I'd like you to, other questions, comments?
I assume that in the contract then, if there, it's guaranteed by certain, by 12:31 and it's not fulfilled, they'll be, and will be attached to make up that 500,000?
No, well, let's, the short answer is the grant poop, it disappears.
Yes, but we would have it if the contractor performed. If the contractor doesn't perform, shouldn't the contractor, the, choose be responsible for that 500,000?
So.
And there's a penalty in the contract.
In, in many, you, you can answer that after me, but in many of the contracts that I looked at for community centers, it ranges, and the prior contract that we put out, it, there were liquidated damages of $1,000 a day. And in the, in another one for Maricopa Community Center, I think it was, they had $1,500 a day. But that's not a $20 million project.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just saying what I've seen. I haven't seen a half million dollar penalty.
Anyway, we could do anything we wanted. If we lose it because of the contractor, I think someone has to be responsible and it's not the city.
Well, there, there are a lot of moving pieces. There are a lot of ways that can get delayed. Have you had a chance to have any informal conversations with Silicon Valley Clean Energy? If we are coming up against the deadline, if there are any options?
Let's deal with this afterwards because I really want you all to go through this.
Okay.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sorry, but I just work a lot with contractors, so have you started talking to any contractors? Because contractors are really busy, especially if there's good. Are, do we have anybody in mind?
Yeah.
Well, the short answer is we need to get contractors excited. I would propose that we do exactly what you're mentioning. But what we need to make sure that we do is that, as Daryl pointed out, that it's a level playing field. So we can't go and say there's three contractors and we're not going to talk to anyone else. That's why I suggest if we're going to do a press release and we had the preliminary plans on our website, we could do a press release, right? And then everyone knows about it. They choose not to, that's easy to do. We've done those before. And then we can speak to individual contractors.
Okay, here's my next question. Are there any rules on being that it's a government contract? On what contractors need to do, like, are they paying any wages?
Yes, several that we monitor, yes.
Can you tell me what they are? So when I try to sell the job to some contractors?
Well, you know that the biggest issue is prevailing wage. They have to be registered with the state. All the subcontracture have to be registered with the state. So they have to pay a higher wage than a non-union contract.
Does that have somebody in mind that I can go with?
There's, if, if I can build on that, after I've looked through all these different requests for proposals, what you've got in there are, are standard terms and conditions that are across every public agency. So there's a surety bond, there's some other things. And the first time, the first time I looked at it, my eyes, first of all, they glazed over and then I'm like, okay, I gotta force myself to think about this. And then I'm like, okay, I, I get what they're asking. And it can be very intimidating to a contractor that is used to doing residential construction. I mean, there, we had one non-responsive bid in the last, in the
Last cycle.
Last cycle. And, you know, I think that person, if they were coached and, and they had some understanding of what it is, they could have been a responsive bid. But again, I don't want to get ahead of, I don't want to get too far over our speeds here. But the takeaway, Mr. Chair, is that we really have to focus on the timeline because the sort of damage is this half billion dollar grant, which is a good chunk of this project. That's the takeaway, right? That's the takeaway. Okay, that's why I've got a sense of urgency. Understand.
Our, our goal is to streamline that timeline that I gave you. I'm not saying that we have fluff in it, but we're going to try to beat each one of those milestones as much as we can to deliver. We also have the ability to issue certain permits because we are the city. If there's something that triggers that fund, I think we will be creative enough to make sure that we get our occupancy when we get our occupancy, but we'll see how that looks out.
Continue.
Any other questions I could answer for you on the process or milestones at this point? I'm sure more will come up during the discussion.
If I can chime in, we do have to be
You may approach the podium, please. Yeah.
We do have to be very careful with the process. We have been challenged on our contracts before. If there is a contractor that feels that they have received not the right information or that another contractor has received an unfair advantage, they can challenge the whole process and tie us up in court. And that's the result we don't want. So sometimes haste makes waste. We have to be super, super careful. When we do advertise in the newspaper, they have, you know, companies that build these, they look for these prevailing wage, wage jobs, these government contracts. They have their agents, their employees looking through the newspaper, looking for these public notices all day long. So we're going to get plenty of people stepping forward or plenty of contractors stepping forward when we advertise it in the newspaper. So I think as far as the awareness campaign is concerned, if we stick it out there as what Daryl recommended for two to four weeks, I think we're going to get plenty of, plenty of people seeing it, plenty of action, so to speak.
Mr. Lee and Artis, let's make it perfectly clear. I believe that the city of Monte Sereno should have a full and open process and we should try to solicit as many bids as possible. Having said that, there's nothing that we will do, I believe, that will, that would allow anyone to say, you know what, I didn't know this project was underway. I didn't, I, I could have asked for material, but I didn't. The onus is going to be on them. And you can create some fear and saying, oh, you know, maybe we've got a problem here. You know what? Why would we hide anything from a contractor? It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make this.
That's not the point that I was making.
What's the point you're making?
The point is sore loser syndrome. A contractor will miss the opportunity, another person, their contract will come in just below and they'll win. And the one right above says, hey, this guy had some inside information or this guy got to visit your site and I didn't. That's exactly what happened on one of our streets projects and we had to get our attorney involved to reverse all that. So, you know, you'll get, you know, what's what I call sore loser syndrome. They didn't win.
It's 1,335 square feet, not
I know.
This, if there was another two zeros behind it, I get it, but I don't.
We don't know what will happen with the process, you know.
I, I understand. Let's, let's keep
But we have to be prepared for
Yes.
all those types of situations.
I believe we have to act prudently.
Yes.
I, I think I understand your point. I think everybody here in the room should be very careful
We have to be careful.
and very much aware of what they do. Don't, don't go out informally to a contractor.
Yeah, we should not assume anything.
Correct.
Okay, I think we're all on the same page. Mr. Chair, let's proceed. Now, if we could go to the status of the of the plan check.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ali Karapour, consultant to the building department. What we're here
You're our building official, if I recall correctly.
I think. Officially, it's called Billy Department's consultant. We are prepared here, we are prepared here to this, to explain to the committee the reason, the need for reducing the square footage of the building, which is approximately 40 square feet. We have a short PowerPoint presentation. Knowing the time constraint, does the committee likes to us, for us, go over the details? Or just talk about the status of the plan check?
If you stay at a high level, there is, I believe you're requesting to make one change. If you could just describe the square footage and the comment from the fire department.
Yes, what happened on November 13th, a building package plans that you see was submitted to the city. All departments involved reviewed it, made comments. The comments were compiled and was, were sent back to the architect and their team on December 1st. As you may have noticed on the agenda, there are numerous comments. Many of them have to do with the life safety and the fire comments. Had to do identifying two major problems as code wise, building code and fire code problems, which had to do with the proximity of the building, the proposed design to the existing city hall building, this building. And also the square footage of the building. Because of those two, I won't go over the comments though, but there were numerous comments about these two problems. The solution which would resolve both issues was to reduce the square foot of the building.
By 40 square feet.
By 40 square feet, which we think is a minimal impact to overall feel and design of the buildings. We have PowerPoint presentation to show you the difference and all that, if the committee wishes to see. And basically, by doing that, we're resolving all those comments that are related to that, to those issues. As far as the timeline for the plan check, the consultants and their team have volleys in their court to respond to the comments and resubmit to us. We had a meeting with them, with some of the consultants and the architect. And we were told that in about two weeks, they could resubmit. Which is a little bit, of course, optimistic, but I guess mid-January would be a good time to assume that we receive a resubmit of the package.
Have, are you having any conversations with them prior, Eric? Let me say it differently. You can, are they going to give you all the responses in one package? Or are they going through on an item by item basis with you so that they can go through and understand if they're going to meet the plan check requirements with their revisions?
We do not accept receiving partial submissions.
Okay.
We want one full package for variety reasons, because it creates a confusion delays for everyone. However, having said that, we had intentionally had that meeting with them in order to identify who are the players. So if there are any questions, any face-to-face meetings, emails are necessary to send the questions that they have directly to the person. As an example, if there is a planning issue, they can go directly talk to Diana or see the fire issue. They can talk to the plan checker in the fire and for structural, non-structural myself. But the expectation and the requirement is that we receive a full package.
Okay, so let's just zero in on the change in the square footage because the city council because the city council had approved a, a design. And, uh, if, and city council delegated authority to this body to make certain changes. And I think it was, uh, so provided we stay with the color palette, we can make those changes, we have the ability. But if we have to change the square footage, the footprint of the building, if you will, then I think that's super important. And this committee should, should either understand what that is and recommend that we do it or, or, sorry, understand what it is and approve the change or recommend that city council make that change and approve the change. And that's gotta be, excuse me, on our critical path because the next meeting of city council is the seventeenth of, uh, I believe it's the seventeenth of January.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Uh, Mr. Chair, if we have to reduce the size by forty square feet to, uh, deal with the, uh, fire committees comments of all respect, I think this committee should make that decision because I don't see where we'd have any choice. Unless I'm missing something.
Hold on, Mr. Leon Artis.
My missing, it sounds like the critical step is to reduce the, the footprint by forty square feet to deal and that will alleviate the many concerns that we got on the plan check. And if that's the case, uh, as it's currently, I would recommend that this committee do that this morning, uh, unless I'm missing something here.
Understood.
Can I ask a question to the If we reduce it by forty square feet by taking that utility closet and making it not part of the living space and its access by the exterior, would that satisfy the fire department's requirement?
Uh, the location where the square footage is being reduced is where the, uh, uh, occupancy area was.
Oh, here.
So it doesn't need to show it?
Exactly. Uh, I think it would be helpful if, uh, the committee wishes that we quickly do the comparison. So we specifically show what's the reason.
Yeah. If I could just chime in, this is what would be considered a non-substantial change, uh, removing forty square foot to meet a fire code. So this, this, this body can make that decision without council authority. This kind of stuff happens in public bidding all the time. So this is to be expected.
Well, sensitive to our time.
Yes, plans are checked and reviewed. Go ahead.
Hello, good morning. I'm Diana Perkins, um, on the planning department. So this is the, um, additional, the addition to the building. So we just clipped that portion, um, to compare the original approval with, um, the architect's reduced size, just so that you can look at them side by side. So the issue is
Sorry, the city hall building is right here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, and the, it, the code issue is the distance between the community center building and this building. So it's a, uh, not necessarily a square footage issue of the community center, but a distance, yeah. And we could leave the community center building size the way it is, but we would have to install fire sprinklers in that building and this building, which would be quite an expense. So in order to avoid that, it's a little hard to see here, but the original building addition was twenty-three feet, um, in width, in this direction. And the proposal is to reduce it to twenty-one feet. Um, so that's where, I'm sorry, the building is twenty feet in this direction. So that's where the total forty square foot reduction on is. However, you
Twenty times two, twenty feet by two, uh, sorry.
Sorry, forty.
Twenty times two.
Is forty square feet.
Yeah. However, you can see in the original design, the millwork, um, and the fireplace was pretty substantial. And so the architect has, um, reduced that to, um, one foot in depth. So there's really a twenty square foot decrease in usable floor area.
So forty square feet.
Forty square feet in the building, twenty square feet in usable floor area by reducing the depth of this millwork. On the other change, you can see here is these two windows on either side of the fireplace would also be removed.
So we were bumping that wall out before and we're still bumping it out just by less, two feet less.
That's right.
Does the, does the change affect the roof line at all?
Actually not. Uh, the reason that they proposed, uh, this design is to keep the roof line, the e-line the same throughout. Then, uh, originally we thought that the fireplace needs to be removed because of that. And however, uh, the last proposal we received after discussion with the architects said that the chimney can stay the way it is. The millwork, as Diana explained, will be reduced that to make the usability inside the link not much different.
It's, oh, we've got someone at the door. Oh, they can come in. Sorry, continue.
I'm sorry, at some point, the chair wants to move into the second most change. I'm very excited for Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's just make sure that we have all the questions on this and then I want to take public comment on it.
I have a comment.
No, go ahead.
Uh, I think I support, uh, one city manager, Leon Artis', assessment that this does not require council approval. And I'm fully willing to take responsibility for moving it here. Um, you can, they can blame me.
Um, is there anything else? Are there any other substantive changes? And I would call this a change that, that the, uh, community center committee should approve it, any removal of winding, windows, et cetera, even if it's not a is not a substantive change. But is there anything else in the plan check?
There is numerous comments, uh, mechanical, electrical, structural. But, uh, we don't think the result of it, when the building permit is resubmitted to us, will be very significant with what the council has seen.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'd like to open public comment on this. There's no one in chambers. Uh, so I'll ask if anyone's appearing virtually, if they'd like to make a comment, public comment on this, please raise your virtual hand. I'll close public comment on that and then bring it back. And I believe we had a motion.
We, we do, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion in a second and that's to, uh, accept the proposed, uh, floor plan?
Yes, as Mr. Chair.
Uh, now, is this a resolution or is this a motion?
Well, we don't have a resolution.
We don't have a resolution.
Right.
Resolutions have to be taken by roll call, just so we know. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries two, four, six, seven.
Eight.
Eight.
Eight zero.
Oh, perfect. I'm sorry. Eight, zero, one. Eight, zero, one. That's great. Okay. Uh, and thank you very much, um, for going through that. Well, if we could go now to the other, so that strokes off this item off the list. And if you could go back to the agenda that I put up. That you put up.
As I read through everything, uh, it's a discussed walkways and this and that. Um, can we get an approval from the fire department if we don't have the landscaping and the, the gutters and things incorporated in the design? Can the fire department sign off on it?
I, I believe they can.
Okay.
I think we're, we're in good shape.
Okay, give me a second to, I'm not able to help, please.
By the way, I appreciate everyone coming this morning in the rain and, and, you know, uh, dealing with this and, and, uh, I also want to say while we're waiting that staff is working very hard on this and I, I know that Ali on the plan check side has been really focused and the fire department were really uh, fast with this. They moved us, I believe, to the top of the queue. So. Um, okay, if we, we see agenda new business, you'll see highlighted at the top. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, uh, backup. So, I'm sorry, Civic Center. So I'm calling the Civic, we are, Steve Leon Artis suggested we call this property the Civic Center now, not City Hall because it's gonna be made up of a couple buildings. So it's known as the Civic Center. So Civic Center features and scope, if you could go to the next one. So we've got our community center committee, or sorry, building. And our project, the community center project is not defined. Okay, so the question is, what's the scope of this? And is it just the community center building? Does it include the landscaping along Highway nine? Does it include the bioswale for the groundwater retention? Which is part of the green stormwater infrastructure project that we have? Does it include the irrigation for landscaping, the parking lot requirements? And then the last item is the security, privacy and noise and having a fence so that we're a good neighbor with our, with our, um, with our neighbors. And there's some, there's some non-agreement as to what's included in the scope. And I believe that we were in one of these meetings. And, uh, the mayor Wolchimer said, we need to consider what's going on at City Hall and the Civic Center in its totality. We can't do one project, do some trenching, do some work, then do another project, then do another. It just becomes a multi-year problem and and I'm not sure if the neighborhoods that, that you live in, but when you see projects that keep going and going and going.
They seem to all do that.
They seem to all do that. And, you know, if we've got the opportunity not to do that and to integrate our projects, then maybe that's a good thing.
Yeah, I, with respect, I think your questions were thoughtful. I mean, it's, it's, it's obvious that we should deal with all aspects of this so that it's all done. And it's a, it's cohesive and it all fits together rather than beastly. So I would, unless I'm missing something, I would think that we should be dealing with everything that's on the, uh, on the slide up there.
I agree with that. But we have a time constraint. And my concern from what you, I understood you to say it's gonna be tough enough to get the building done by the thirty-first. But if we have to do everything else by the thirty-first.
Okay, just, just where, we have to have the building done, but the building is independent of the other ones. But while we're waiting for things to happen, it allows us to, to work in parallel, not in series. We don't do one and then do the other. The question is, what do we want in the scope? So, so, and, and Lon, I am delighted to hear that you think it's a rhetorical question because I think it's a rhetorical question as well. And I think when Abert mentions right from the get-go, let's do, like, let's have an integrated plan. That makes sense. If, if we could not, if we could circle back to this, I'm, I'm concerned by the time, but, um, and, and also I want to open public comment on this. And in fact, are there other questions?
I just have a very brief comment. I agree with what Seth because if we engage people for all of these things, we are having conversations with them. So we don't inadvertently do something in one part of the property that makes it difficult in another, you, you know. Uh, even if the work's not done by that final date, at least we have the design conversations inside and out.
The, I guess the other thing is, um, I know that what we've engaged, uh, coal sat associates to do is not the landscaping. And we really do need to think through engaging someone to do the landscaping plan and making sure that that's integrated. And Gary has always said, oh, I just sketched in an arbor and I did some other things just to put it into context because you can't have, you know, just the building there without some context. And then the other one is, uh, and it's not on this slide, but it should say Veterans Memorial. And last night at the city council meeting, what they want to do is they want this committee to include our veterans memorial in the scope of the project. Because if the scope of the project includes the landscaping and we want to have an external, um, veterans memorial, which we've talked about for probably close to fifteen years, we can start to include that. Yeah, okay. So.
So that should be on the list.
So, and, and, and they did plant it squarely inside of the community center committee's scope. Um, so if we could just continue because, uh, we've got a lot to cover. But before I do, I'd like to open public comment on this item. If you're a member of the public appearing virtually, uh, please raise your virtual hand if you'd like to make comment on this. I'll close public comment. Uh, and if we could pause and they'll circle back perhaps for a motion to include.
Well, one, this one comment that I'd like to make is maybe when we look for contractors, we could ask them to include bids for relevant pieces of this whole list. For example, the groundwater retention. Can the contractor who does the building do the groundwater retention facility also?
The, so I, now, the GSI project round, what, green stormwater infrastructure project is, is not what a general contractor for a thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-five square foot building would do. And to ask them to do things that aren't in their wheelhouse, that, you know, is, I, I think we want to integrate the projects and I'm not the, I'm not a city engineer, but so long as we understand that if we were, for example, to trench between this building and the other building and to put it, to connect them electric, electrically, that when you're doing that trench, if you have to put some other things in the trench, then you do it at the same time. And if you say the landscaping, we're gonna do a bioswale, then you say the landscaping scope of work should include a bioswale. And the, and if you've got to have a pipe going from the back of the parking lot through to the, to Highway nine as part of the bioswale, then you should do that when you're doing all your excavation and have the pipe just sitting there.
Yep. So that will require staff to coordinate all these, I don't know, pipe contractors throughout the year.
If we're gonna hire a contractor that has not handled a project of this complexity, could we budget, um, a contractor that's done large, complicated projects to review the plans as a consultant to say, you know, are we missing anything?
Um, so, so there, in what I've seen for larger projects, and let's just take the Los Altos Community Center. It's twenty-four and a half thousand square feet. This is thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-five square.
Exactly.
So it's, this is much, is five percent of the size. It seems like it's complex, but I think it's because we're this, it's not that complex. But I don't believe that the contractors, for example, that Heather is, is thinking of. They don't have any interest in doing a green star water infrastructure. They just want to get in, build something that's really nice. And it's, it's, and it's in their, it's in their expertise. Would that answer your question?
Not, not really. I, I think just because that was twenty-four thousand, so it doesn't mean it was that much more difficult. I mean, we're having all these features with a very small footprint. And I just, uh, we can't maybe afford someone that does these huge projects, but could we hire them as a consultant once we have all our plans? To say, are we missing anything? Just get the benefit of their expertise. Because we might be hiring because of the small size. People that are residential builders, residential architects, residential present, but then we have these commercial requirements. And we may need, I mean, the, the nine pages of comments made me think we need a little more knowledge brought to bear. And could we hire that on an hourly basis? Even if we can't afford to, to have it soup to nuts.
Why don't we, why don't we take that question under advisement and have staff consider that versus making a decision on that today? I, I think to some extent, having someone with some construction, a construction manager, that's the role, but I'd, I'd have to, here, it's, it's a role of the programming and that then rolls into the actual construction part. But if we could move word, is that okay? Okay. Okay.
I have a question. Uh, I know that December thirty-first is a hard day to lose five hundred thousand dollars. Have we talked to the people that are gonna give us the five hundred and ask them?
So I wanna, I wanna cover that explicitly. But if we could move forward and hold that question, because that's causing me an immense amount of concern. Next slide. So this is what we've covered. Go to the next slide. Okay, so this is an eye chart. But if you, if you look at it, what we've got at the top, and sorry, I can't see it. The project to be funded is one point five million. Everyone's seen that. We've got seventy-eight thousand five hundred. In remaining federal funds, so it brings us down to fourteen twenty-one. Then our funding on this was through the city of Monte Serena, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is five hundred thousand. We were saying we'd get donations of a hundred thousand. The remaining federal grant, a resilience, you can see grant, which I'm gonna speak to. And then we thought we'd get donations in kind of thirty thousand. We, we'd be part of the Valley Water Small Cities Partnership for fifty thousand. The city of Monte Serena would have to pick in an extra one seventy-five, which is what we had expected. So that gives you a million and a half in funding. And a million and a half that has to be funded and you'll see GSI project is zero on here. And then you say, what's the net cost of the city of Monte Serena? Well, if you take, if you manage those grants well, you take your one point five and reduce it by six hundred and ninety-four thousand. Uh, five hundred, you get down to six hundred and twenty-seven. That number doesn't add up anyways. So then the total cost of the city is the five fifty-two and the one twenty-five. So, okay, so keep your eye on the seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Next slide. So what I did was, I said, okay. What's the total cost of this project in, in the one point five million? What made that, what made that? It was a hundred and sixty in soft costs. Then a million in hard cost of construction. The parking lot GSI that was included was one fifty. Furniture fixtures, sixty-three website, five thousand landscaping, a hundred and fifteen-five. Okay, so you see where the one point five million comes from, right? And then you look on a square foot basis, the soft costs and the hard costs. Is one point one six six, thirteen hundred and sixty-five square feet. So it's eight fifty-five a square foot for the building, right? So you, some people, they like that metric. And then I said, okay, let's do the best case, worst case. The best case being low cost, the worst case being high cost, right? And we can, I've got the slides that go into the detail on this, but then you have to back out the scope change the GSI. So on the right-hand side, under worst case scenario, we, for the construction, the parking lot GSI is two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Right, so you have to back that, that out because that's funded separately. Okay? So, and then you see the square footage went to thirteen hundred and thirty-five square feet and it should be thirteen twenty-five. But I didn't think that the difference is, is de minimis. So your cost per square foot is eight sixty-seven in the best case scenario. And in the worst case scenario, I believe it's gonna be twelve twenty-four. Okay, and then, then I've got a projected column in there that says, what's, what do we project, right? Like, it's your best case, worst case, but originally, what are you, what are you projecting? And you're projecting is what you've incurred to date plus your estimate of the remaining. So on the right-hand side, incurred to date plus remaining equals your projected. And your projected total of one, seven, twelve, three ninety becomes your projected column on the left-hand side. I just wanted to include that. Next slide, please. So here's the soft costs. So you say, where, where do these numbers come from? Where's the low, where's, where's the high? And you know, what have we spent? And then that's, you can see what we spent before. So you can see that, you know, best case eighty-eight thousand for soft costs, worst case hundred and ninety-six. Plus what we spent before, so your soft costs are gonna be two hundred and fourteen to four sixty-seven. And in the project or in the plan submittal, everything in there says. Refer to architect, refer to architect, refer to architect. Well, I've seen why architects do that and it basically creates an annuity for them. And what it should say is. Owner's representative. Because the owner's representative could be, depending on what the issue is, that could be the architect. It could be the civil engineer, it could be someone else. Okay, it could be our, our city engineer, it could be our project manager. Right, it doesn't have to be the architect. And if you think a cycle time and how long everything's gonna take. So, so you get, you understand the soft cost scenario. Uh, go back one slide. So keep your eye on the, on the two fourteen and the four sixty-seven. Two fourteen and the four sixty-seven, you see it in the top row. So you see how I'm building this, right? Go forward a slide, two slides. No, next one. Next one. Next one. So here's what I estimate the building hard construction cost to be. And there's, there's more detail underneath that. And what we need to do is part of our, our project is, uh, you have to, we have to engage someone to actually come up with what these numbers are. Because you have to say, uh. Here's what the city of Monte Serena believes the numbers will be. Okay, so these are all my numbers, which I think are somewhat reasonable. And you can see on the demolition, we've already spent twenty thousand dollars removing things from the site. So that's what we've incurred to date. Okay, an example. And then these are all the numbers, so you can see that. I think the best case scenario is nine forty-two, the worst case scenario is we'll be. Uh, eleven sixty-six, seven twenty-five. Okay, go to the next slide. The other way. That's okay. Furniture and fixtures. We, we need to have a budget for our furniture and fixtures and our appliances. Okay? And. You know, you can see, I believe we're gonna be at ninety thousand dollars, not at fifty-five thousand. And the original was sixty-three thousand. But this also is, if you can get manufacturers to provide you with appliances. It will reduce, uh, uh, because this is a showroom for them, they will give you, give it to you at a lower cost. Um, next slide, please. This is parking lot GSI, so original. Uh, then best case and worst case. And then projected, so. In this, I'm saying, the worst case scenario is basically what the projection's gonna be. I think it's, I think it's gonna be expensive. But then there's a separate budget for this at this, in the city council budget. It's not sandal, it's not part of our budget. Okay, next slide. So here's landscaping, so you know. Again, I'm just, or. Oh, it's not the correct one. Go to the next slide. I'm sorry, I don't have the landscaping in there. Go, go to the next slide. So this is going back to the same one that you saw before. No, it's fine. So you see that column that says original? And I said, keep your eye on the seven twenty-seven at the bottom. So now what we've done is we've put in the worst case scenario and the best case scenario. From the construction, so you see the one point five million is now net of the GSI project. Is going to two oh seventy-seven, two twenty-five, or it could be fourteen sixty-one, nine sixty. I'm projecting we'd be at one point seven, one two, three ninety, net. So you see the way, the way the numbers work? Okay? Okay, uh, go to the next slide, please. This now fills in the bottom part, cause I didn't want you to sort of see all the numbers at once. I wanted them to bill. But then you say, in the worst case scenario, if we fail to meet the grant obligations. And the best case is we comply with the grants. You can see that. The cost to the city, remember I said, keep your eye on the seven twenty-seven? Goes worst case scenario, we're gonna be spending one point nine eight seven million. Best case scenario, seven sixty-six. I'm projecting one point one million. So at the very bottom, additional funding request, and then there's a percentage down below. We could be over by a hundred and seventy-three percent, or in the best case scenario. Five percent over. I'm projecting fifty-one percent over. Okay, next slide. There's three grants to be gone, three possible grants. One is the fourteen thousand five hundred. That expires in a few days. We've not met the requirements for that, and I'm gonna get to your point in a few minutes. Which your question, the next one are five hundred K decarbonization demonstration grant, twelve thirty-one, twenty-four. Okay, then there's also the Valley Water Small Cities Partnership. And there's five, fifty thousand dollars, I'm putting it in at fifty, but it's on a reimbursement basis. And it could be as high as whatever we spend on all our plumbing, all our land, all our. Plumbing, water-related landscaping, so, so anything that we do that relates to water. They, they are on a reimbursement basis. Silicon Valley is, we'll just give you the money as part of your project. Kind of a general fund versus a specific item fund. And then donations, you know, a hundred thousand dollars from the community, thirty thousand in donations in quan, in kind from equipment. Manufacturers, so this is, this is in the, is in the scenario. Where we get, how are we gonna pay for this, right? Cause if we don't get this money, then the city's gonna be paying for it. Go to the next slide, please. Let's deal with the timeline for a little bit. Go to the next slide. So I like to model things, I like to stare into the future and say, what's in front of us? Let's try to anticipate things, let's, let's work it so that we can do things expeditiously. Let's not do one, take one step and then say, oh, okay, now I have to take another step. Right, it's like, let's figure out all the steps that we have to take and then go through. So then I said, okay. What's the start date from a best case, worst case? And then there's the calendar days for the number of days that each, each task will take. And it gets a little funky with a project planning software like Microsoft Project. You can put in business days versus calendar days, so I had to kinda go around and, and think through the calendar days. So then, if you say the end date column is the best case start date. Plus the best case number of days gives you the best case ending date. Worst case is the worst case. And then you see the numbers going forward. So. We can go through all this, but then you get down to number item twenty at the bottom, ribbon cutting ceremony. And granted, that's the ceremony I could, could have put in occupancy permit. Right, and then you say, best case. Oh, so I see another, I see another error, I'm sorry. This is a little, uh, in any event, and I have to, oh, why is that? I'm, I'm sorry, this is, this is wrong. I'll, I'll update. Basically, the ribbon cutting ceremony could be somewhere in, or late October. In the best case scenario. But let's focus on, on the, on the items up above, right? Because we respond to the plan check comments, submit for review, second plan check. I put in the fifteenth to the nineteenth there, best case, worst case scenario. How many days is there to respond? Then they send it in for review, third plan check. And there is no third cycle, but going to the, uh. Issuing the building permit, best case scenario by February first, worst case by the twenty-third of February. Right? And then incorporate plans into the request for proposal. You see, I've got, that's where it's either one day or three days, right? We should be, I think it should be right away, because you've got a wrapper, a legal document that goes around. The, the, the approved plans. But you don't have to work on, on the legal contract after it gets done. It should be done beforehand. It can be administrative tasks, generally speaking, can be done in parallel. Right, and then you see published request for proposals. And then prepare proposals, that's, as soon as you publish the request for proposal. As, as, uh, Daryl pointed out, then you've got best case twenty-one calendar days, worst case twenty-eight. And so Daryl said he wanted to have twenty-eight days for that, right? So, so, and these numbers actually work. Then in the. The best case scenario could be two twenty-three, so Feb twenty-third, worst case, March twenty-fifth. Right, if you take the worst case scenario, it takes as long as you can, right? Submit proposals to city, open city bids, open the sealed bids. And then the next row is evaluate proposals. It could take, I'm saying, best case scenario, three days, worst case scenario, seven days, right? Now you're at, at April first, if it's worst case scenario. And then recommend the contractor to the city council. It could be on by three, five, or, or two. Well, we have, we know that we've got city council, sorry, we know that we have city council meetings on the fifth. Of March, and on the second of April. Right, so the recommending the contractor for the city to approve. Best case scenario, three, five, worst case scenario, four, two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I wanted to, uh, I'd like to do a time check. You said earlier, we had a hard stop. So.
He had the hardest to one person, then, okay.
Yeah.
Everybody else, okay?
For another, for another few minutes? Thank you, appreciate that. So then we notify the contractor of the award bid. I put in two days for that, sign the agreement with the contractor, best case, worst day, pays two days. They actually get the agreement upfront. Then the question is, how long does it take the contractor to mobilize their subcontractors, right? And then when's your groundbreaking ceremony? So your groundbreaking ceremony could be three seventeen to four twenty-one. Right, and that, and I say groundbreaking ceremony, I mean, like, people keep asking me, when are you gonna start? When are you gonna break ground? So at least we've got a best case scenario, worst case scenario. Then, and here's where the math error is, and I apologize for that. Then we've got. The construction and you could say, does it take two hundred and ten calendar days? Or does it take two hundred and fifty-four? And I, and the two fifty-four, I actually worked backwards and said. What, how many days is the maximum going to the twelve thirty-one, twenty, twenty-four? It works out to two hundred and fifty-four days. So if you take two-ten off of that, you're at thirty, at forty-four days prior, which is October, near the end of October, right? So this is what. I believe that we should understand, because, if you go to the next slide. Go to the next, oh, so what, what are the things that can be done in parallel? We can prepare the detailed specification documents, and this is non-trivial. This is a thick package. Prepare the legal agreement for the RFP, actually prepare the RFP with all the documentation in there, but we just don't have the plans, right? We know the other information, that could all be done now. Notify potential contractors that the RFP is coming. That we can do through a, uh, press release so that people know about, right? Prepare the general ledger for. Prepare the general ledger for budget actual, when are we gonna start to accumulate our costs? What's our budget going to be, right? Once we, that doesn't include what the bid is, but we could at least be preparing for it so that, so that all of a sudden, when we start paying money, it's not like, oh gee, we gotta think about how the financial reporting is for this. And then determine the payment process to the contractor, that's also part of the legal agreement. But physically, how are we gonna do that? And one of the things with contractors is, they always want to get paid. You know, and, and, oh, well, you know what? We have to have it go to a warrant list, we have to approve that, that only happens twice a month, et cetera. People, we have to be easy to do business with. Go to the next slide, please. And if we're not easy to do business with, what's the contractor gonna do? They're gonna say, well, I'm gonna charge you extra for this, because I know I'm not gonna get paid on time. You know, inspections are gonna take too long, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna bill you for that, I mean, you know, they, they all had it. So now I'm gonna shift gears and talk about the, this fence, right? The existing fence that you see out there is not on our property line. Our property line is another six feet on the other side of that. There's a lot of history as to why the fence was put in there, and I spoke with Brian Leventhal, who actually was all part of that process. And it was agreed that the fence would be set back so that headlights from the parking lot wouldn't go into our neighbors across, to the north of us, into their, into their house. Uh, are we? For the plans, we need is, since we're only gonna have one way in and out of here, we need as much space in that parking lot as, as we can get. And we don't want to go up and pave more, we want to move the wheel stops closer to the trees. But we can't do that where, where the fence is today. And I, I believe that what we've talked about is building the fence on the property line with a small retaining wall there. So we don't need to wait for all kinds of things to do that, we need to, we need to have this on our, on our line. Can you just move that out of the way so I can read the slide?
Let me, can we one second to?
Don't read it now, oh my goodness.
I wanna hear you working. I can't take control of it, because I'm sharing, so give me one second, I might just stop.
While, while we do that, uh, can I comment on that last hundred thousand cents? I don't think there's been any official discussion about if we really want to do this. Because it will create all kinds of issues. So I think we need to have a serious discussion with all parties, uh, involved, if we actually do want to move that fence or not.
Okay. I think that that's super important, I think that this committee has to understand it. And the issue is, is that I, as a citizen of Monteserino, if someone is, has a benefit of city land, and I don't have that, that's unfair to me. That's my personal perspective, that here's where the property line is, and we've had it surveyed. They, they are neighbors to the north, signed off on, on acknowledging that we own that land. And you may say, you know what, let's, let's not slow the process down, but you know what? I don't think it's gonna slow the process down at all, let's just deal with it. But, but that's a separate issue, and we need to address it, that's an elephant that's, that's standing in our room. So let me continue. Let's just say, we were gonna do the fence, right? We want to do an eight-foot fence, and Heather, you may recall that when we changed the fence ordinance, we specifically said you can have an eight-foot fence around a community center, right? That was for this particular project, we can have an eight-foot fence, but has to go through site and architecture for review and approval, right? So that, they only meet once a month, you have to have the materials in, like, three weeks before after those, those sign architecture approves it, because it's over seven feet, it has to go for a building permit, so then you have to go for the permit, right? So I just wanted everyone to understand, hey, let's think this through from A to Z, what the steps are, because otherwise, we're, oh gee, site and architect, you know, by the time we get this through, anyways, next slide.
And Finn says they're supposed to, you know, be aesthetically clean, they are, so having the architect way on in on.
Yeah, I don't think we need an architect to design a fence.
Or whoever is that, I mean, they can suggest color, trade on there.
Uh, let's talk about the grants, you, that, that is top of mind, next slide, please. So part of your packet was the impact report, and I copied a couple of pieces out of the impact report. This is one of them, this is the savings, but this gives you a perspective of the size of the relative municipalities that are part of Silicon Valley Clean Energy. So if you look at the bottom, it's a hundred and one million two hundred thousand dollars, right? And who's, who's the biggest? Um, this all goes by, by, um, by bills. So you see City of Sunnyvale, twenty eight million, right? Look at the City of Monteserino, four hundred and fifteen thousand. If you round this to the, to the nearest million, right? We get rounded to zero. All right, it's kind of funny, but, but this is business, this is reality, and how do you think? Anyway, so let's go to the next slide. So, so, so this gives you, this gives you an understanding of the relative size. Okay, so we're tiny, we're a fly spec. Next slide. This is S V C E came up with this thing they called the Community Resilience Grants. And this was done strictly pro rata based on how many dollars of energy was sold through Silicon Valley Clean Energy in your municipality. So you can see here that, you know, Peters got seven hundred thousand, Sunnyvale got a billion, Saratoga got a hundred and thirty nine thousand, we pro rata got fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Okay, this is all, this has been underway, and the monies have been spent, and the resilience is there in these projects. This is, this grant expires on the thirty first of December. Poof, it disappears. So I've got a.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty three.
Twenty twenty three.
And then, so we have eleven days.
Okay.
And just hold, hold on, go ahead.
Just quickly, can you explain, like, that grant money shows up as we're building, and we draw from those funds? Or we, we don't get the money to the very end of the project?
You can, you can do it, they're very flexible, that you can do it two ways. You can say, okay, you need the money to, the city needs the money to fund the project, they'll give you the fourteen thousand five hundred, right? But you have to spend it, right? So your obligation is to, is to fulfill the grant requirement. If you fulfill the grant requirement, their obligation is to pay you. So, and, but they would prefer to pay you after it's done, because then it's, you know, if you need the cash, they'll give it to you. They don't, they want the project to continue, they want the resiliency, they've got money. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so just under the contract that you would have with them, it just has to be completed by that date? Or we would have to pay them back if we took prior money?
Yeah, but we don't have, we don't, we've got lots of money, that money's not an issue, cash flow isn't an issue. We've got four million dollars in the bank. So, but you understand, the community, this is already being reported, and we haven't started yet. We don't even have a project plan that says when it's, when is, when is this resilience grant gonna be put in? It's fourteen and a half thousand bucks, I can't, I can't get too wound up about that. But I can't ask people to donate money, knowing that we've already thrown away fourteen and a half thousand dollars.
Is city council gonna spend it?
No.
Could only get radios and flashlights?
No, no. Let's, let's.
But I mean, like.
So, so let's read the top line. The Community Resilience Program funds zero-carbon capital projects that reduce the likelihood or the impacts of power outages. Throughout the program, S V C is distributed five million between its thirteen men, member communities by enter, for energy resilient, resilience projects to reduce the impacts of power outages from storms, natural disasters, or other events, while supporting decarbonization and job creation. Key items in there. Decarbonization, right? So we have, so in our original grant was for, application was for the community center. And we had a natural gas heating in there, and natural gas water heater. I mean, our application was submitted saying we're gonna be zero carbon, but yet our plan said that we're gonna have natural gas, like, we wouldn't have got the application anyways. Like, we weren't meeting our requirements. This, for our five hundred thousand dollars, that building, if it's carbon-free, it has no natural gas, we have, it's got a gas meter there today. We need to get rid of the gas meter, gas meter is still there. It was raised in an issue back in, in July, let's get rid of the gas meter, because it shows our, we're committed to this. Let's order some Tesla batteries that we can spend the money, and we don't have to take delivery of them, but let's at least order them. Right? So that we're committed to this. Instead, we, so we're gonna lose fourteen and a half thousand. So does that answer your question a little bit? Let's continue. As you can see, I'm.
So are you asking the community center committee to come up with a way to spend the fourteen, what's the action item on that one?
You'll, you'll see in a. This is the three point two million decarbonization demonstration grants, let me read it. This grant program offers financial support to public agencies and community groups to demonstrate decarbonization projects at community buildings. The funding is intended to cover the incremental cost for these facilities to choose the efficient electric options over a like-for-like gas replacement. And what we did in our, in our grant application that was as part of the docket, or packet, in it, we, we, and we say, we're gonna have this all-electric building, it's gonna be a demonstration site. We, we want to promote it within the, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Service territory, so people can come and see things, right? And that's why they bought it, not because, oh, you know, you're gonna reduce your, your gap, your natural gas footprint. No, we said in the, in there, that by, by, by being an advocate and having people see it, we'll have a force multiplier, we'll have leverage, so that other people are reducing their carbon footprint by, by moving to heat pump water heaters. So we got five hundred thousand, oh, three point two million. And then you saw, we make up point four percent of their loan. This was a huge stretch. And I am chair of the executive committee, and I'm gonna be chair of the board of directors, and then the following year, I'd be chair of the board of directors. I, and let me answer your question. I can't ask for a favor from them in good faith, unless I know there's a project plan, we've done everything possible so that, so that we can, we can move forward. For me to say, oh, you know what? Do us a favor, we didn't meet the grant requirements, but let's, if, if you could extend that, we'd really appreciate it. I, yeah, you see that, you understand, I, that's, so. And then I've got other people sitting on the board that are like, Ryan, it's one thousand three hundred and sixty five square feet. Your City of Monteserino was five council members and eleven staff. Can you make this happen like, you know, Gilroy's building a fire station? You know, other things have been done, go to the next slide, please. This is out of their impact report as well, and this is where they say they want to do contractor training, and they want to have these demonstration facilities so that even though they're supporting contractors to, to be retrained, and for, for uh, building inspectors to get trained on what a heat pump water heater is and that sort of thing. They, they wanted to have our building so people could go and they could have a field trip there, do something, right? That's the value. It's not a little tiny community center, the value is it's a demonstration, so they've designed their programs to do that. Go to the next slide, please. At the top, you see back, that's Bay Area Air Quality Management District. And they have banned the sale of nitrous oxide emitting equipment, and that they have banned the sale of leaf blowers in a couple of years, it's not effective today. They're a leader in the country, and one of the things is, they are the ones that ban uh, natural gas-powered heat pump water heaters. And this is what's causing Silicon Valley immense, uh, concern. If you look at the way the hockey stick, stick is gonna go in terms of replacing heat pump water heaters, it goes from very slow, all of a sudden, it's gonna go way up. They believe that there's a, there is a problem on the horizon, because people aren't aware of this, they need to create awareness. This is very important to them from a business perspective. They're staring into the future and saying, we got a problem here, but you know what? Monteserino, we gave, we've committed to giving you five hundred thousand dollars, when are you gonna get this thing done? So that we can start demonstrating to people, they can go and they can see it, they can touch it, they can hear it, they can understand how it fits together. Versus, oh, there's an emergency, and they have to get a new heat pump water heater, and the, or they have to get a new water heater, and they get a natural gas one, you know? They, they want to get ahead of it. So go to the next slide, please. This, now I want to get back to that fifty thousand dollar grant from, from the Small Cities Partnership for, um, Valley Water. I've met with them multiple times, and they, and they said, okay, we really like what you're doing, but what we'll do is, we, we can only reimburse you for money that you spent, which is very different than Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And they said, you know what? We could give you some money, because they have money to give, because they charge fees and whatnot, but on your water bill, but they wanted to see community support. So on the right-hand side, it's like, if you want this grant, you have to show community support. So on the community support, we said, let's, let's, uh, get donations. Like, how much community financial support have you got, right? So that was the genesis of getting the, uh, contributions from, from residents, which we've got some committed donations, or, or not committed, nothing's committed, but we actually, we did receive five thousand dollars, but on community support, they said, show us the community support, and then come back to us, and we'll give you a grant. So that's why we did the community support, and then for the community support, financial support, we did the survey to say, here's how it would be used. And people are really excited about this, and they're like, wow, this is cool. But, you know, we now need to still bring it to fruition. But, but I think the money is there for a grant, if we manage this, if we can make it happen. If we can't make it happen, then poof, the money disappears, and if the money disappears, you know what happens on the funding, right? It'll go from the city paying seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, to one point nine million dollars. Okay, go to the next slide, please. Community, so, so, um, what I wanted to do is kind of go through that and make sure that the community center committee understands the path and where we've gotten risks. So, um, questions, comments? I know that I've asked you to hold your, your questions for a while.
I'm really concerned about the timeline, just being in this business, knowing how things go, I think it's gonna be difficult to navigate that timeline.
Don't talk, what is the, what is the expectation that's all that I have, like, and obviously, you're not bringing, you're not advocating to complete.
Repeat your question.
So what, what, what is due from us, you know, um?
So. So what we need to do is deliver the building in good faith and fulfill our requirements. And in the grant, which I, application, which was, I was hoping you would read, there's two components, there's what you're building, right? And again, what we're building is, is not important to them, it's the programs, it's showing the other people so that they get the force multiplier, they get the leverage out of this, right? And so we've got a commitment to do not only the building, but we've got a commitment to do the programming. And I think that based on the survey where people said, oh, I would like to see things on energy efficiency. I would like to see different, you know, I, I'm. I would like to see different, you know, I, I'm interested in this. That shows that the programming, there's a demand for it within the city of Monte Serena, but then there's outside of the city of Monte Serena. So, I, I guess, if you say, what's the ask? Right, why, Brian, why are you showing this? Because this is causing me an immense amount of stress. And I don't mean that in a bad way. It's like, hey, I thought everything was going okay. I think we have an issue here. And, and I, and, oh, December thirty-one, you're gonna lose fourteen and a half thousand dollars. Not a big deal, gets lost in the round, okay? Five hundred thousand dollars? That moves the needle in a big way. Were we in a problem before? No, no, there's still lots of runway. And now it's like, I think it's gonna be difficult to make that. And as a city council member, I've gotta sit down and, and say, gee, if this is gonna take one point nine million dollars of our reserves, uh, where are we gonna be on our three and a half million dollar reserves that we have to have? In, you know, and we really shouldn't spend under that? Then I'd have to reject the proposal, the, all the bids, if, if that's the way it's gonna come in. So, I just wanted to communicate this and make sure that everyone understands that we need to have a sense of urgency. And, you know.
What a nightmare scenario is, of course, that we find a great contractor and they run into all kinds of delays and, and we're building, we're three quarters through the building and then December thirty-first comes and we lose the grants. What do we do then?
So, so let's, let's deal with that, okay? I said before that we have, that I don't mind asking things for things to be done. But I have to do it in good faith. I have to have integrity. I have to say, did the plan have it completed by December thirty-one? Yes, it did. Okay. Were there issues that came up that were unforeseen? Yes, there were. Then I could in good faith say, that's wrong. If the plan says, we're not even gonna disconnect the natural gas, even though we've known about it for six months, how can I in good faith say, oh, you know what? Give us a pass on that? So I think that, that, ever to answer your question, so long as we're acting in good faith, so long as we've got a realistic plan where we've anticipated things. And, oh, you know what? Everything got delayed because we didn't even, we didn't even know we needed to wrap a legal, uh, agreement around this. We didn't start it until a building plan permit was issued. I mean, if that causes a two-week delay and you go two weeks into January, is I good faith? No, that's just a bad plan. I'm sorry.
But I think, I think the biggest variable, if you look at all the dates on the, the biggest chunk is the construction. It's ninety percent of all the dates added together.
So, so how do you make it easy to accelerate that? How do you make it easy? And I, I think what we've got the ability to do for is to take all the uncertainty of that, right? And to have the contractor lined up so that they have the resources available. You know? Well, we have to be able to do what we can do to say, you know what? We, we can do certain things and, but we're not gonna even think about that because, because the contractor, it's all, it's all on the contractor. You cannot, I do not believe you can take that approach.
No, I, I, I agree. They need to manage the contractor, obviously. But what I always say to a contractor, if he calls me two months, it's gonna be, it's gonna take two months. And I say, okay, yeah, I agree, four months. I was double what.
You know, I, I actually disagree with that because, you know, you, you, and in the, in the budgets that I put together, I, I included a contingency there. I despise contingencies because I think a contingency is a lack of planning. Okay? So, but, but again, that, that's me. I think that it's like, okay, it's gonna take two months. What are the, what's gonna happen inside of the two months? If the contractor can't tell you wh- where the two months is coming from, then I'd say, yeah, four months, because the contractor doesn't know what the steps are. Most contractors, if they stay within their, within their experience, they know how long it takes. And there's certain things that you can't, that you can't change the timeline for, right? Concrete, it's got a cure. You wanna bring it up to compressive strength? It takes fourteen to twenty-eight days before you can do work, right? That's why a lot of construction projects, road construction, takes a long time. It's concrete has to cure. No, paint, you're gonna paint the, the inside. Oh, you know what? Our occupancy can't be done until the paint's dry. You know what? Okay. It's not, it's not done by December thirty-first, the paint isn't dry. Well, okay, I get it. You know, certain things, certain things you can't change the time of. Other things you can. I'm just saying, I really think this project has to be managed really well. And it's becoming more critical as every day goes by.
Well, I have a, a comment. When you have a contractor and you want him to get it done on time, sometimes you give them a financial incentive to finish it early. So maybe you could have some kind of an incentive for a contractor to finish it on time.
That's, I, I don't disagree with that. But we at least need to say, you know what? What's, what's a realistic timeline? What's, what are the things that we can anticipate and do everything? So for example, we need an inspection to occur, right? The contractors, the con, I believe that our Alan, our, our inspector, he will drop, he will rearrange his day so that he can do that inspection right away. If the contractor has a question and, and our staff and or this committee can deal with this and we don't have to wait a week for the architect, you know, we are, I think we have to be committed to be easy to work with and to be very responsive. And for that, the contractor say, you know what? Yeah, okay, this, this is a good, this is a good thing. And I'm not gonna cushion the timeline, I'm not gonna. And the contractor can also say, hey, you know what? If we do this differently, you know, we can change the timeline. There's some trade-offs that you could make, you know? And let's, let's deal with another thing that's like super important. And I, and I, in the plans, in the, if you recall, there's a bifolding door that leads to the patio that was in the, the one set of plans, the, the footprint that Ali put up. Did you know the bifolding door?
Yeah.
Okay? Bifolding doors and, and windows. The, there's problems with the supply chain. And I spoke with the gentleman that, that, um, is a representative in the area, okay? And I was asking questions, I wasn't saying, you know, I wasn't violating anything. And he, before he said, there was a nine-month wait for windows. That is shortened now. It's like fourteen weeks. Yeah. So you, in the, in the, in the project plan, you know, we need to have something that says, hey, if, what is, would a, what would a realistic timeline be? And maybe we need, as the city, to preorder those and get three bids on the windows and the slide bifolding doors so that at least we don't get caught in the supply chain crunch. You know, we, we, we need, and to get to your point, maybe we need a construction manager that can look at this and say, where, where are the, how do the project plans integrate? The projects integrate and, and how, what's the, what are the key steps in there? You know, what's, what's the lead time?
Why can't you be the construction manager?
I have volunteered, but I, and I will help. But, you know, uh, I can't tell the city to do something. The city has to ask me to do something.
Do we know who the people are up in Los Altos? That seems like they could, um, you know, have a casual conversation or.
I had, I, I've had multiple conversations with them. They are so nice. They've shown us what, what's up there. In fact, I, I took Sarah to, to see Los Altos Community Center. They've been there, done that, gone through all of this before. We're not the first one to go.
Right. So you, you conveyed to us the sense of urgency. What do you think we need to do differently or do now are the action items?
That's a very good question. And we need, and I, I don't have the exact answer for that. I think we need to give direction to city council to say, and we did that, one, in terms of, you know, changing the footprint, or, we, we gave direction to staff to change the footprint, right? I think, I think we need to, to see a project plan that, that aligns something. I think that that's something that, that staff need to do, not just, you know? And then there's certain pieces in there that need to be managed by staff. So for example, the bid package, then our city attorney should, should have, should be working on that. City staff could be working on all those items that were. Could you go back to the timeline summary, please? Probably back ten slides.
So the city council money is not in this meeting, so.
Well, there's the mayor's here.
Okay.
You know, only two people can be here from city council. Keep going back.
Oh, I meant, when I said city council, I mean city attorney. I was using council on that, so.
Oh.
Yeah, that was my mistake.
S E L, not C I L. I'm sorry. Go back, uh, forward one, I'm sorry.
Come back.
No, no, that one, that one, that one. I think these are things like just in, immediately, these are things that we need to think through.
That make a comment?
Yeah, totally.
I have multiple projects going at a time. And, you know, from the top being like an eleven million dollar project to other ones. And I'll tell you, all boils down to the right contractor and how they operate. And I know we don't have complete control how that bid gets chosen. But if we get the right contractor with good organizational and timeline skills, I can't tell you what a difference it'll make. So I think our time should be spent is encouraging contractors that we know have that kind of reputation to bid the project. And I know it's hard to control who actually gets that bid, right? But I think that's a key.
I, okay, so, so, so what I'm hearing is that, that we, this, the community center committee could give direction to staff to, to, uh, notify you following required, um, process, whatever the, you know, not going up, not skirting anything to, to give fair and open, uh, communication regarding this upcoming project and issue a press release and then contact selected, you know, contractors that may have an interest in it.
And I think the interest in it's gonna become tricky too. It's a small project.
That's the problem. If, if it had two more zeros.
Yeah, most of them don't wanna do it.
Exactly. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Good news is we're really tiny, bad news is we're really.
So we've got a sugar-dried way to sell it. You can use it as a demonstration to your clients on all of these wonderful energy-saving things we're doing.
That dovetails into the website. Because I think we have a website. We can put our project plans, our preliminary plans on the website. We can do a press release. We can say, here's the website, right? So every, the whole world has got that or has access to it. And then the website, we can, we need to start to paint that up as per we discussed in the, committed to in the, um, uh, grant application. No, I, I, I hear you one hundred percent on both, A, the contractor's key and B, where it's such a tiny project, you know? But that's why we have to, it's easy to do business with.
Oh, a hundred percent. But, um, like, I can think of a contractor that would, oh, would be perfect for this job because he can super organize time, has his own staff, pays the failing wages, all that. But to get him to do it, why would he want to? And so maybe that's the selling point again, is the, like, you can give the contractor permission to use whenever it's not in use, it has a showroom for, you know, these energy-efficient things that clients might be interested in.
So do contractor bids usually include a detailed schedule?
They can, it just depends on the contractor and if the.
We could make that a request.
You can, but again, one more reason they're not gonna wanna do it. But, but there's contractors that do that in their scope of work anyway. And that's the proof that people I think we need to attract.
And it's good visibility for the contractor as they're working on the project, especially if they put some signage out front.
But if they're a contractor, contractor right now, they have plenty of work. There's, that's not a.
I, I think that, Ali, what's happening with our volume of permit volume?
Um, you see less of the big, big projects, new, new homes, new A D U. And more of the smaller projects, uh, remodels, generators, photovoltaic. You see a lot of more, smaller projects.
Well, to the extent that it drives A D U business their way.
A D U's are hard because they're so expensive. You know, unless you want to use it for family or someone you know and on your property, I think it's cost for you, for people to build them. They're not an investment that you wanna do for rental income. It's not a very expensive. As we can tell by basically, we're building an A D U and I mean, that's what it costs to build.
A few A D U projects were pre-cut, uh, A D U that we use.
Yeah, there's one going in, Mike's really pre-cut.
Yeah. But there, but what is there? Angie's, it probably is a pool house or a gym or they.
Maybe family, I don't know.
Family, yeah.
I, I don't actually know, that's speculation.
Do you have some time check? I probably need to go.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
I have to leave at eleven, also.
I need to go to eleven.
Okay. Well, um, so let's, let's go back. So the, um, we go to the first, or actually, you know what? Let me look at the agenda. And we said review changes to meet occupancy limits. So we have a motion on that, right? And we approve that, right? Uh, review obligations to receive grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy, information only, no action required. So everyone understands what the situation is there, right? Presentation and discussion on community center website.
Yeah, we, um, I put together a placeholder with this information that's now available. I can add more detail. But I think we really need to go out to a, a professional web developer and not me behind my little P C. So I can, I, I can do it, but, uh, to, to a limited extent. We need to find a good web developer and have it done professionally.
So, that's what we need to do. How do we do that?
Uh, does anybody have any contacts in the web development industry?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I do, yeah, I can.
And you, can you provide us with some names?
So we've got a subcommittee, an ad hoc committee. And the ad hoc committee is not round act, so we can work together. And I'm on that, you're on that and who up and, and, and you in line. So we cannot, how, we come, can I add one more?
Maybe one more.
Yeah. So, um, shall we?
Should we bring this topic back for the majority?
Well, or maybe I could provide names to the committee in this session.
And like, you know, some, some budget.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, maybe.
Just provide me with some names.
Yeah. Context around like the requirements on where it is posted right now and like, you know, or maybe would like it posted, um, and what kind of content that needs to go there. I think, um, uh, I almost wanna say I can do that for you if you want.
Or, I mean, could we, maybe one of the existing members of the committee could jump off? I'd be happy to jump off if she, I mean, that, I don't, that's not a.
Yeah, okay. Okay, fair enough.
I can, I can give you names, um, and.
Yeah, I think that's for now, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, just as a thing, like even my husband, my husband is a comedian, who you all know, is, is a web developer. So I think he can do that as well, so.
Will we have a target for that?
Yeah, we have five thousand dollars.
That's pretty more than enough.
Yeah.
I hope.
Well, there's the capital cost, the initial cost, the one-time cost, and then the operating costs.
Yeah, yeah, ultimately it will evolve into, we have a website where people come in for reservations, things like that.
Oh, yeah, we need all that.
Okay.
So, anything else on the website? So we've got an action item there.
Yeah.
So then, uh, number six is review civic center features and recommend scope to city council. Consider recommending project scope on civic center to city council. Consider recommending project scope on Civic Center to city council. And that's the first one on, could you go to the very first slide? Oh, wow. There we go. Next slide. So. Do we want to identify the scope? And make a recommending, recommendation to city council?
Oh, what's missing from this list is the uh veterans.
Yeah.
It needs to be added to the list, other than that.
Sorry, you were gonna say.
Yeah, the same thing. The veterans, we talked about that and it's part of the scope. So do we need a motion to have these things plus the veterans memorial decline?
Yeah, so we could add the veterans memorial, but it was, it was put on our plate last night. Uh, you were there.
Yes.
So, uh, yeah, we could have a motion.
Yeah, to um add the veterans memorial to the scope and then divide these items plus the uh memorial as the scope of the Civic Center. Project.
We have a motion in a second. We do not have a resolution, so we don't need a roll call. Oh, sorry, I I'll take public comment once again, even though I took public comment on this before, but now that we have a resolution. Uh, or sorry, a motion, I'm all open public comment on this item. Uh, if you're, there is no one in chambers, if you're appearing remotely, please raise your virtual hand. No hands are raised. We'll close public comment on this. We've got a motion in a second. I'll call the questions. All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero one?
Seven zero two.
Or seven?
Seven zero two.
Seven zero two. Thank you for doing the math. Um, with that, it's just a moment before eleven. That clock runs two minutes fast. I believe on future agenda items. Just out of curiosity. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for late January, I think, right?
January seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Do people have availability before then if if we need to call a meeting twenty four hours in advance?
I do.
It depends, okay.
Depends when it is.
Yeah.
Um, if you call a meeting for December twenty fourth.
Yeah, we know. Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna do anything unreasonable. My point is, is that? Is that that the next available date or could we possibly search for a date if there's something to do to keep moving this ball down the road?
Yes.
So, thank you very much for for me being able to share my sense of urgency and my concern. And I hope to, um, you understand where I'm coming from.
I thought your presentation was super impressive and I.
We're gonna, thank you. We're adjourning the meeting of the December twentieth Community Center. Building Committee at ten fifty eight, eight.